Thank you. I'd like to invite County Commissioner Keith Condefor. Can I invite him to ask your question, please?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. Clearly, the best outcome for the Neaton and Bedworth would be forming a single unitary council based in the Neaton and Bedworth, which would bring jobs and some prosperity back to our borough. This would be the cheapest option, but it's not on the table. Clearly, the worst outcome from the Neaton and Bedworth will be forming a single unitary council very much based in Warwick, with significant disadvantages to some of our residents in the borough. If we are forced down this road, then we need robust measures to counteract any disadvantages in the new structure. This would require the new authority to have a significant local presence, a local access to services, local jobs and local access to democracy. The two-unitary option is not going to be easy without fair funding, and for the least, well-off parts of Warwickshire in the arrangements. We clearly need to share some services, such as waste and fire, but that could be done at a reasonable-sized council that is better served than the needs of the borough. This is all down to the current Labour government, what the current Labour government selects, and giving us a fair, long-term funding settlement. I need to ask the current leader of the council, what discussions are taking place with the three local MPs and his party, so that we could get a fair funding system in place, which would make the two-unitary model for Warwickshire viable. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Watkins, can I ask you to move the motion?
Thanks for your final question there, Commissioner Condefor. So I'll answer your question, because most of it was a statement. So I'm having regular meetings with the three MPs, and I met with John Swender earlier this week. So that they're ongoing and will continue. The financial statement is set out in the papers. And so that answers your questions about Warwickshire.
Supplementary, please? I don't think you can say no. It's up to the mayor's discretion.
I won't be taking any supplementary synergies, because we've got a lot to discuss this evening. Thank you. Okay, everyone. I've got no more public speakers down to speak this evening, so I'm going to move on to agenda item six, the local reorganisation. Commissioner Watkins, can I ask you to move the motion?
Yes, I want to move the motion that has given place where everybody's seen tonight. We've had a proper party working group set out to discuss everything that would be put with it as wrote out today. And I've got the leader of the Conservative Party, Chris Wilson, for his part in this, which we thought would be good. So I'll move what's wrote out today and the second one up. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Watkins. Does that see the second up? Commissioner Wilson?
Madam, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And I second my right to speak. But can I also make a procedural motion to suspend standing orders to allow the three party leaders to speak not on the clock, so we aren't timing it? Because I think there are a number of points which need to be addressed in this debate. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, it's been moved that we move standing orders to allow a bit of time for speaking. Just that we see the second up. Commissioner Watkins? Okay, everyone, that's been proposed and seconded, so we're going to move to a straight vote on that. All those in favour? And against? Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, so we're going to move straight to the debate on the item any number. Commissioner Handpox?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It was interesting to see the statement from County Commissioner Finch. He just shows how
Can you put your microphone off?
Oh, I do apologize. I'll start again. It's interesting, Madam Mayor, to see the statement from Commissioner Finch. It just shows how he really is about local issues. For over thirty years as a councillor, I've maintained, whether it be local government, health district, services should be delivered locally, whatever possible. Figuring is not always better. We have no identity with Warwick, or rugby for that matter. And I only say that about rugby because on page fourteen, it says that they still not make their mind up about their preferred option. That may well have changed a bit after the terrible attacks. Bedworth now, since Covid, has no civic link, even within Milligan Bedworth. I've tried and tried and tried to get the federal day here office reopened without success. It's not too late, Madam Mayor. If we don't do it now, does anybody think it will happen underneath a unitary authority? Perhaps Bedworth and the Neaton will get the promised land of town councils. Even then, what will it be? There'll be no money, no workforce. Perhaps we will get to decide on the colour of the benches. So, no, I'm not convinced by these rosy proposals, rosy unitary authorities. I feel we have been brought those into agreeing with them. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Commissioner Craft?
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. I am happy to support the motion as moved by the even moving opposition. But I did want to put my views on the record as a private member, so if there could be options for debate, which will not be any ready to members of the council. Firstly, I want to say, I do think the government has approached this the wrong way now. I do think that what you need to do is look at powers before you look at structure. Powers for local government and finances of local government. Because if we go through this process and we end up with a single unitary council or a double unitary council, which has still got almost no financial wiggle room, it's got a whole host of statutory duties on it which it cannot get out of, and very little control over policy areas, then the whole exercise will be pointless. So not that anyone will listen, but I call on the government to look at local government powers before they look at the local government structure. It's very gratifying to help people out as a local member, but government is ultimately there to govern, and local governments' powers are very limited at the moment. I do think the two-tiered system has had its day. I agree with that for reasons we need not re-litigate. And I'll support the motion. I'm happy to support the two-unitary model on the grounds that it will make decision-making closer to the people. It will make it more local. But with significant reservations on my part, which I raise not to be difficult, but to try and constructively contribute to the debate. So first of all, I am very dubious about the finances of the two-unitary model as presented in this report. The county commissioned a report which suggested that the most financially viable option was a single unitary, and districts and boroughs have commissioned reports which play down the problems with the finances. There's a lot of possibly and might and maybes and could in this report. And for me, the killer question is, if we do go down the two-unitary route, what will then happen to the assets and liabilities of the county council being divided between the two parts of the county? I think this is a question that we must have an answer to. I don't mean it's an insoluble problem, but we need to have an answer. If it so happens that the liabilities are a whole load of social spending and a whole load of send liabilities in the north, and the assets are a whole load of land holdings in the south, we will be in serious trouble in the north of the county. So I think that we need to have more information and more detail on that. I'm not saying that to be difficult, but I think that is an important point that needs to be addressed. The same point, I think, needs to be addressed in what happens to the powers when they get devolved. Because I know I've complained about this before, but when government recently, of all parties, has devolved power, it's been devolved to combined authorities and partnerships and boards and trusts and whatnot. And that's not really within democratic control. That's not really bringing power closer to people. So if, for example, County Highways is so big, it has to continue under its own separate body, I would have a problem with that. I think it's better to bring those powers into whatever the unitary authority looks like. People say they don't like giving powers to politicians, but a politician is someone who is elected and you can get rid of. Whereas boards of officials are people you can't get rid of. And then I want to put on record again my opposition to town and parish councils. I'm afraid I do disagree with the council on that. Because there is no point knocking out districts and boroughs, particularly in this part of the world, and then replacing it with another layer of government, of parishes and districts, with an additional government quid on the counter attack reset. So that is my view on the issue for us. I think that the party leaders will go into more detail later. And finally, I would just say that the last time we did this, we were in what, 1972? So we do need to be taking a very long-term view with it. We need to be thinking in terms of fifty years, half a century, rather than next election or the next few years. So that is my view of that.
Thank you. Any other member? Commissioner Weiss?
Hi, thank you. So yes, I will also be supporting the motion. I'm also supporting the two-two system of unitary councils. I think that the point that Commissioner Finch seems to have missed is not just getting more saving, but the fair distribution of funding. Commissioner Finch talks about representing residents. Is he aware that during the consultation process, seventy-three percent of residents selected the two option as their preferred option? Representing residents means listening to their views and concerns. Now, isn't that another idea? For far too long, the north of the county has been the poor neighbour, and this will only continue with a single unitary based in the south, business as usual. The former county administration closed children's centres in the north and retained them in the south. The current reform councillor advocated disabled children walking over three miles to school, which illustrates their idea of savings in action. You only have to look at the state of our borough in comparison to the south of the county to see where funding is prioritised. In stopping four, the residents have been campaigning to have their bus shelter reinstated in Thornton's Way for eighteen months, and still not actioned. At a residents' meeting two weeks ago, issues were raised about concerns of safety in Repri Road. The county councillor not only did not attend the meeting, but did not acknowledge the invite. Growth Farm is not only overrun with potholes, but many of the paths are unsafe. If Commissioner Finch can spare some time away from Shire Hall, I'd be quite happy to take him on a walk around my ward to see for himself the difference between the north and the south, and why I feel we need residents to do better.
Can I forget on that one?
Thank you. Any other member? Commissioner Weiss?
Thank you. Well, let's start with that. Those are really not news. There's quite evidence split between north and south of the county, and it has been for a while. And it's not just about income. We are talking quite a lot about income. It's also about expenditure. And I think over our lifetime, you know, being an active resident, we've tried to identify what is actual spend. You know, how do your targets and needs of the north? Because it's not just about having a project or a programme which is equally distributed throughout the county, but actually that tackles issues and tackles gaps. I think it's evident, as my colleague was saying here, when you look at the roads, when you look at the services being provided here, there is evidently a gap. Now, in this context, we really need to think about what is better for local. And residents have spoken. Majority of residents support north and south, establishing north and south unitary authorities. And at the end of the day, we can't look at just LGR, which is local governance reform, as actual devolution. I'm making up on a point, devolution is happening as well. So it's about bringing decisions closer to the people. And as such, we really can't give away this opportunity when our north around here really needs more tact, support, more attention, which may involve further kind of interventions to essentially support that. So I'll be supporting the motion as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member? Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. My apologies for not standing. My own preference, as I'm sure it's the same as many of you in this chamber will be, to remain in the Neaton and Bedworth, as this is not an option unfortunately, the two-unitary model offers. So a strong place, focused delivery for local people allows for a better understanding of local issues. In terms of the difference that could be made is on health and wellbeing. The quality of healthcare and wellbeing board has not reduced health and health policies in this borough. They've already got water. The borough generally underperforms against surveying health indicators, obesity, mental health, work expectancy. There's also educational attainment, mainly for young. Standard education will be better led under the two model system, where local needs can be better met for the better understanding of challenges facing residents. By using the two-unitary model, it will allow better use of the resources for change at the local level. I'd be supportive of that recommendation. Okay?
Thank you. Commissioner Handpox?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I think you will know, twelve months ago, I was about to support the whole unitary project. Due only to the top four statutory responsibilities of having social care, payments for transport, tour and services and send, particularly the cost for the doors. But I think there's some way to go. And I still have reservations, particularly about the finances. But I think this is an opportunity to make a change in the future. And for those reasons, I'd just be supporting the motion.
Thank you. Commissioner Hayton?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I too would be in agreement. I too would be, of course, in this motion. If County County Council have done such a great job for the last thirty, forty years, then why does nobody want to join this single authority? It doesn't feel like we are one county. As has been said by all speakers, you know, the state of the roads in the north of the county are far worse than the south, which needs to meet all the potholes and counter price of highlighting very well the issues of her patch. We've got the educational achievements as well and send, which is generally a big issue there. And I do think making decisions more locally by splitting the county into two would be much more effective and would be a fresh start for some of these services as well, like we said. I do agree with Commissioner Croft, having some concerns of the finances. I think there's some reassurance that we do go down to the unitary model, that it does work financially for both sides, because we don't want to do this and then end up in financial trouble and all the rest of it. And it would be nice if London County had more towers as well, but I didn't have that established about Greenlit, but it would be nice to have. So yeah, so gentlemen speaking, I do agree with the I think the best solution is going to be a split model. I think it's going to work better for our residents. Again, so what was the finances? Are clear and, you know, is this sustainable? And can the council see at the north and the south? So that's my view. Thank you.
The six seats at
Thank you. Any other member?
A shadow, I mean, six seats at the cabinet.
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. I'll be supporting the motions for us tonight. I think Commissioner Croft's arguments were really well put, that there are concerns over the finances, and we need to make sure we get the correct settlement. But, as we know, more than seven in ten people who responded to consultation wanted to see a two-unitary solution. And I know from talking to residents in Ash Green, Epsall and Cursi, they already feel distant from the council. Things like matchday parking enforcement at the arena, which is non-existent, administered from Warwick, trying to get road repairs and things like that in our area, which has the densest population, the highest use of roads, the highest pressure on those roads, and the least scope to actually build more roads to alleviate things. So we need to have those things in place. But it's quite clear that this is what the public really want. They want something that reflects local democracy. I'm sceptical, like Commissioner Croft, about the idea of then bringing in another layer of representation, town councils. We've never had them here. If we look at the glorified parish council, there's another layer which adds costs to residents and is basically just raising issues which have to be paid for by the eventual authority. There's little point to it. However much residents might think that bringing back Bedworth Town Council takes them back to some rose-tinted version of the past that never actually existed. So we do have to get this right. We have to represent our residents. And like Commissioner Croft said, this is something that's been here for fifty years, not just to the next election. So I will be supporting this. Thank you. One final thing I would add is, what we really don't want is for the eventual council to be joining another super body like the online authority. Because what our residents do not want to see is decisions on major planning issues, for example, taken away from the wall together. We already have a disconnect between what residents want at the planning stage and what actually gets voted through. Because if the planning policies, to take it one layer further away from them, makes them feel even more isolated from democracy. So let's go for the two-authority solution that's on the menu tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any of the members wish to speak? Commissioner Condefor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I mean, I think quite a lot of points have already been covered, and I think we're all pretty much in agreement in all parts of the chamber. I mean, we already do quite a lot of sharing of services. We've got certain ones that are shared with rugby. We've got other ones that are shared with North Warwickshire and things. So we do already have those links. I don't think any of us would deny that actually having a unitary would be beneficial in quite a lot of aspects, because the number of times residents contact us, and I'm sure everyone's saying they don't know which council they should be contacting and who to contact and things. So from that aspect, that will certainly be a much better thing. Funding agreement is going to be critical, and unfortunately, we don't know exactly how that will be worked out. So there is an element of we don't know, and that would apply whichever way this bit goes. It's again, it's been said, and I absolutely agree, you know, it's a long-term decision. These things do not happen every week, every month, every year. You know, the last time there was serious, you know, reorganisation on this level for this area, it was, you know, in the nineteen seventies, when quite a few people in this chamber probably weren't even born. I was. Certainly, having a single unitary authority would really create a massive democratic deficit for this area. It'd be ludicrous to have a unitary based in Warwick, where this town, the largest town in the north of the county, and all the other smaller towns in the north of the county, Addiston, Bedworth, Cozil, none of us have a direct bus or train service to Warwick. How are people supposed to actually participate in democratic decisions when they can't even get to meetings unless they've got a car? Yeah, so that in itself, you know, it's got to be a strong factor in saying that the two-unitary model would be better. And looking at the NHS, that is moving back to trying to provide much more local services, because it's shown that that gets better outcomes when services are close to the population that is using them in whichever way and things. So I think, you know, it makes absolute sense to be voting for this motion and for a two-unitary option for Warwickshire.
Thank you. Commissioner Burnham?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. And yeah, can I just say a massive thank you to everyone who has contributed to the debate tonight? So much of what has been said, I agree with completely in regards, you know, what the Democrats have said, what the Greens have said. And also, you know, Commissioner Croft and Commissioner Brown highlighted the financial situation. And absolutely, completely agree, we need to have reassurances. And I think we are going to have those reassurances, and that's certainly a long-term hope, certainly for me. I don't really see this as a political issue in the sense of left, right, Conservative, Labour, Lib Dem or Green. I see it more as a, clearly it's a geographic issue, this, and we've got a short petition posted tonight. You know, we're all the leading vote of councillors, leading vote of all councillors here tonight. And we love our borough, whether we agree or disagree over the state of it and its progression and how it's going. We all love this area and we love what we represent. And when you love something, even if it's not going in the right direction, you don't agree with the way things are going, fundamentally, we all want the best for this area. And I think what we all want, and this is clear from tonight, we all want a north-south split in a unitary authority, two separate unitary authorities, because politically, economically, culturally, geographically, to me, it just makes a hell of a lot of sense. There was, someone alluded to bureaucracy earlier. There was a, Commissioner Finch alluded to bureaucracy. I mean, I find that this change of form in case of bureaucracy, where they've spent two hundred thousand pounds for advisors, but putting all that to one side and the cost of the bureaucracy at Shire Hall, culturally speaking and geographically speaking, you know, I'm proud to be from the Neaton. I've lived here most of my life. It's no secret. I've hung around here, felt like a bad smell for a long, long time. I went to Warwick University and I lived in Leamington for a year. So I've actually lived, you know, as a student, as a university student, south of Warwickshire. And it was a culture shock. When I first went to Leamington, I was, I was in awe of it. I thought, my God, this is completely different from anything I've ever seen. I thought it was in London. I thought I got the wrong train. It was a lot, it was a shocking journey. Much of a shocking journey. But I was shocked by Leamington. And obviously, I enjoyed living there for the ten months I did. But it was completely different from here. And I'm not saying that to say, you know, I want to cause division and rancor. I don't want to cause all that. I'm just making the point that up here, it's a very different place. I think we need to focus on priorities here. As Commissioner Brown pointed out, even matchday parking, it's a completely different kettle of fish up here compared to the south. We're dealing with different issues. We're dealing with different concerns. It's very, very different. I won't ramble on too long, because I'm aware that that can sometimes happen. But yeah, I am supporting, I am supporting the motion tonight, my own deputy mayor. I think the case for it is strong, the north-south divide culturally, politically, economically is strong. And yeah, can I just conclude by thanking everyone who's contributed? I'm very much, you know, very happy that despite our fiscal differences, on this very fiscal issue, we actually are in agreement. And I think that's a very good thing. So I thank the Conservatives, I thank for the Greens, I thank my other Labour colleagues as well, because this is about our borough and its future, and it's not about what's good for Warwick or good for Shire Hall. I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any of the members that are resonating, so I'm going to have to go to Chris Wilson. Commissioner Wilson, and then I'll have a hand to it. Commissioner Watkins can try to reply. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. I do have quite a lot to say, because this is a very, very emotive subject. And regardless of our fiscal differences across the spectrum, including how our colleagues are reforming the chamber, we are all passionate about our area, we're all passionate about politics, and we should take that in the spirit it is intended. We just have different views on how that takes place. And we have a very indebted report before us. County Council had a report before it. I am conscious that there is that old saying, 'He who pays the pipe calls the tune'. You can always get a report to be written to the outcome you want. And so I do take all reports with that inch of salt. But there must be a basis of truth. Now, I'm proud of Warwickshire. I lived in Warwickshire. I am from Warwickshire. When people ask me where I'm from, I say I'm from Warwickshire. I'm from Milligan Bedworth, too. Warwickshire will not cease if we're heard to a two-unitary solution. There will always be a ceremonial county called Warwickshire. Solihull used to be part of Warwickshire, great part of Birmingham used to be part of Warwickshire. There are still people who call for Birmingham and Solihull to be part of the Greater Warwickshire and as being part of Greater Birmingham. But we are where we are, Madam Deputy Mayor. And Warwickshire is just as much the county of George Eliot and Larry Grayson and Gareth Edwards as that of Shakespeare and the Kingmaker. We constantly have Shakespeare thrown down our throats now. Don't get me wrong, Shakespeare was a great man. He was possibly the greatest student ever of the human condition. But there is more to Warwickshire than Shakespeare. And I remember when I went to leaders' meetings when I was leader of the council, we were discussing the levelling up plan. And we were asked what we wanted as part of the levelling up plan. And I was saying, well, for me in the Neaton and Bedworth, it's getting kids back into school. It's about raising that educational attainment. It's about getting people into those good, stable, paid jobs. What was Stratford's request for the Warwickshire levelling up plan? A Shakespeare World Heritage Centre? I kid you not. Now, it has its place. Of course it does. It brings in lots of money into the county of Warwickshire. It brings in lots of tourism. But levelling up, it ain't, Madam Deputy Mayor. And I do echo some of the comments from the party opposite about what has been achieved over the past fifty years with Warwickshire County Council as it is now. What would be the value added to giving Warwickshire County Council all the powers that we currently have? No one has been able to answer that question for me. Now, if Commissioner Finch can present that argument to me, I'm not willing to listen. But everything I have read, everything I have seen, everything I have experienced, everything I have lived has told me there is this gap between the north and the south. has told me there is this gap between the North and the South. And we just don't take my word for it, take a look at the election results that happened just a few months ago. The North overwhelmingly, and I may disagree, but that is life, that is democracy, voted for reform. Tides will change, people have yet to learn that. But the South of the county voted overwhelmingly for parties of the left, Greens, Lib Dems. We are seeing that we are becoming further apart politically. It's just patchy, not really, to the reality that we've already known for quite some time, that North and South are not the same. I don't take this argument that has been made, that having two councils will create more bureaucracy. We are going from six councils to two, will be by definition, a reduction in bureaucracy. And I share Councilor Croft's concern about writing town council, and I think it's been shared elsewhere. If they're done right, they can bring value, but my concern would be we would end up something like the vicar of Dibley. We've all seen it, we've all watched it, and unfortunately, as much as we may laugh at it, it does happen. We just have to see what happened during lockdown with that famous video going viral. Now, the economic argument is the biggest issue, and it was always the acuity of a Two Unity Solution. I think we're all acknowledged that, it is the acuity of a Two Unity Solution. But the report before us tonight does show there is a gap between a one and a two unitary solution. We can't deny that. I think it's about two point five million pounds in the report. But what I do have to ask is, what price democracy, Madam Deputy Mayor? Sometimes it is worth paying just a little bit extra to make sure that those decisions, those calls, those big life-altering moments are made locally by people who know our area, who are from our area and care about our area. People of the south rightly care about ours, but do I know as much about Studley as I do about Whitestones, about Campfield? No, I don't, because I don't live there. I can look it up. I work in Leamington as much as I work in Anheater, so I see, just as we heard a moment ago, the disparity between two, if we ain't going to Leamington, but they are different cultures, and we need to have the right makeup for us. In fact, there is a district councils network, again, I do preface this with the he who pays the pipe calls the tune, but there is a report from the district councils network which shows that population sizes of unitary authorities between two hundred and fifty and three hundred and fifty thousand are actually, what I would term that sweet spot, of actually paying less overall for services per head of population. When you start to go too far, too big, that's when you start to find added cost, because you've got to move more, you've got to have people around, who's in the North and the South, as we see now. But we would have a Two Unity Solution, locally designed solutions to our genuine local problems. And I disagree fundamentally with arguments which have come from the gallery about, you know, one economy for Warwickshire. That's rubbish. Look at the evidence. North Warwickshire points towards the A5 and the M6. We all know it, we all live it, again, it's our shared experience. The south of the county looks towards the M40, Oxford, Banbury, Worcestershire Way. We see that in the housing market assessments, for example, which have, to be fair, shafted Anheater and Bedford royally in some respects, because even though Stratford is part of Warwickshire, it took exactly zero percent of Coventry's overspill, and the rest of us had to take some to make up. And also, the south distorts the help which we need. There is a fair funding review that we promised years, we've all known about it, we've all wanted it, but having the south bolted on to us will distort the support we will get from the government in terms of fair funding, because there is greater value added in the south, but when it actually comes to where the most need is, it's in the north. So we won't get, having the south tagged on to us, that help with the fair funding review. And that concerns me greatly, because on paper, the GBA for the south is, for Warwickshire is great, but when you actually go down to the detail, it's half of the county average in Anheater and Bedford. And we can see that as well with the fact that seventeen of twenty-two most deprived areas in the county are in Anheater and Bedford. So again, I come back to my earlier point, where is the value added from a Warwickshire solution? Again, about finances, this concerns me as well, but it's in the report, the debt profiles of the authorities. I think this is a very important point to make, actually. Warwickshire County Council has two hundred and fifty million pounds' worth of debt, that's probably reasonable for an authority of its size. But look at Warwick District Council, that has two hundred million, just fifty million less than a county authority. Now, we are assured by exception one five one officer, that that is sustainable, that may be the case for Warwick, but that was spent on Warwick issues. That's their choice, that's their democratic mandate. But if we end up doing it as part of a single unitary authority, it is residents in Anheater and Bedford who have to pay that two hundred million pounds' worth of debt for Warwick District Council and not see the benefit. Warwick will see the benefit, but we won't. Now, we would also see, on current trajectory, that we would be the third-largest unitary authority in the country if we go for a single Warwickshire, about six hundred and fifty thousand. Councilor Croft and others have talked about the long term, the longer game, looking at the fifty years. If we carry on for the fifty years, Warwickshire will end up at seven fifty, eight hundred, eight hundred and fifty thousand residents. Will a single unitary be able to cope with that? We will then see the democratic deficit enhanced and may work. And I do have to mention that yesterday we had the news about Surrey coming out, that's one for two rather than three. I hope that isn't a bad omen for us, and I hope that our MPs will be able to, while we're on our behalf, actually give the truth from the ground, because again, it looked like government overruled the wishes and feelings of the consultees that answered that, because the consultation's prices were for a Three Unity Solution. But actually, I think, and having pushed our consultants, I think we do have a stronger case for a Two Unity Solution, because of the inherent differences between Anheater and Bedford. And I would like to finish by saying, Madam Deputy Mayor, a thank you to the leader of the council for accepting my proposed amendment on a continuing authority. I think it is an outrage that Warwickshire County Council is trying to go for a continuing authority. We have always been told, every time this has propped its head over the past fifteen years, the council, what in my opinion involved, that whatever happens, if it does happen, every single authority will be dissolved and a new entity created. What saying a continuing authority is, looks like a takeover from Warwickshire County Council. Now, I hope it's not the intent of County Council Finch, but if it walks like a duck, and it quacks like a duck, it is a duck. It looks like a takeover. Now, if we are going to have a single unitary, they will have new powers from us, which not one single county councillor, whether that be Reform, Conservative, Lib Dem, or Labour, or indeed Independent, has a mandate or a policy board for taking on our powers. If there is to be a single unitary, there must, in my view, and I'm grateful that the leader has accepted this, be fresh elections, with proper boundaries, because we know there are great disparities. Wellington, for example, has great disparity in terms of its numbers as a county division. We must have that, so that whatever survives or emerges from this has a proper legitimate mandate. If Reform get it, that's democracy. If Conservatives or Labour get it, that's democracy. But at least we'll be able to exercise all those powers, knowing that the people who have put their cross next to our names have the right to do so. We heard great play twelve months ago, that delaying the elections would be a denial of democracy. People went out there and made great hay about it, and actually, I didn't necessarily disagree with them. But by the same token, Madam Deputy Mayor, a continuing authority is the same thing by any other name, and I will support this joined motion. Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Martin?
I'm just going to clarify a few points of the praise throughout the debate, I think I put a good point across party debate, and it's always had a good input, really, so thank you for your input tonight, I very much appreciate it. Councilor Ann Cox made a mention about it, it was being all goes into this. We have been since last November, when this first hit me, I think it's been constant, constant, every, every, certainly every week, sometimes every day. And to be quite honest, it wasn't something we wanted or needed, at the local level. Finances, just don't add up, mate. As I can see, it's been cheaper, it's definitely not going to be cheaper, and I can say that the HRA, this is something the county are definitely after, to prop up their finances. It was mentioned at the cross-party working party. And I still believe the HRA is something that Warwickshire is definitely after, that's for sure. Perhaps to pay for that financial advisor.
Financial?
It's been mentioned quite a bit about the highways, well, the country took over the highways in nineteen ninety, we're still getting adopted now, and still don't accept them. So if it all went to county, I think we, some of us would have grown our cobbles or something, because they're just not seriously taking the highways seriously, and we definitely don't take health and education seriously. Since I've been a councillor, so fifteen, nearly sixteen years, the JSE or the judge chief in these assessments, it's been something. Been the same problems in the north, and the counties knew about them, and still the same problems are going on today. Fifteen years on, you've got the same problems. Air quality, county board wants to have responsibility for, but I've got a meeting coming up soon with them about county, but they don't want to say responsibility for. Well, you've got the highways, so it's your responsibility. We more than should, it's your responsibility.
We'll have a meeting about it.
Sort it out. Soggy lines, not going ahead with some of the things that was put forward by previous administration. That's that out, because we are out, people should stop in with soggy lines. I want to let you call clear here, that I'm not for North-South or for county, obviously, as we already know, if they are absolutely honest with you, but this is going to thrust upon us. So the best deal we've got is North-South, certainly not being swallowed by county. So with that, I'll end.
Thank you. Thank you, councillors. We're now moving to the debate. All those in favour? Any against? Abstentions? And actually, no, this is carries. Okay, I don't have.
Could we just finish the call? I know it wasn't recorded, but recording the minutes was the unanimous vote. I think that's important to admit.
Yes, councillor, noted. Okay, I don't have any of the business to attend to this meeting, so that concludes the business of this council meeting. I hope you all have a good evening and safe journey home. Thank you, everyone.